Good evening and welcome to the January 6, 2021 reorganization meeting of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. I invite Mary Lou Faco, retired former assistant pastor at the Denville Community Church, to the stage for the invocation and silent prayer.
O sovereign God, we pray to you, the one who made the heavens and the earth. We acknowledge that all the blessings we have in this country come from your loving hand. We welcome your presence here now and throughout this coming year. May your spirit hover over these elected officials and all involved with the Sussex County government. Give them supernatural wisdom to make just decisions. Bestow favor upon them. May they feel your presence and your blessings as they carry out their duty to serve the residents of this county. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Remain standing for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I read the public statement, just a reminder, please move your phones. You can sit down. Pursuant to the open public meetings act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, active notice as defined or section three D of Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 has been made by email on December 30, 2020 as per authorization of the board and her notice, which was posted in email from the Administrative Office of the County of Sussex, located in the Administrative Center, 1 Spring Street, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Carol, New Jersey Sunday Carol, Star Ledger, WNNJ Radio, and WSUS Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board, maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County clerk in compliance with said act. I invite County Clerk Jeffrey Parrott to stage in the determination statement for the November 3, 2020 election.
Teresa?
Yes.
I'm going to read the statement of determination.
Thank you.
We have the statement of determination, a statement of determination of the Board of County Commissars relative to an election held in the county of Sussex State, New Jersey for the election of certain officers for said county on the third day of November 2020. The said board does determine that at the said election, the following officer, Herbert J. Yardley, was elected duly as county commissioner, formerly county freeholder, for a three-year term. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true, full, and correct statement of the termination of the Board of County Commissars therein mentioned. It witnessed therefore, I have hereto set my hand this 23rd day of November 2020. It's signed by Timothy McCabe, Chairperson, Board of County Commissors, Jeffrey M. Parrott, Sussex County Clerk. I, Jeffrey M. Parrott, Sussex County Clerk, do hereby certify that the foregoing is true, full, and correct copy of the statement of the termination of the Board of County Commissors relative to an election held in the county or regional district thereof on the date herein noted for certain officers and certified thereto appended as fully and entirely as the same remains unfiled in my office in testimony the 23rd of November 2020, Jeff Parrott, County Clerk. Herb, I'd like to congratulate you, and I welcome everybody on behalf of the county, and I look forward to working with the freeholders moving ahead, and as you know, the last election we had was a little tough one, but I thank all parties concerned for working with us, Mr. Poff, County Council, Mr. Kramer, who's not here tonight, Senator Oraho, his office, everybody was very, very cooperative, and I appreciate it, and look forward to a healthy, happy, and safe new year. Thank you very much.
I now invite Herbert J. Yardley to center stage to be sworn in as a member of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. Officiated by Senator Oraho.
Herbert, Pat, on behalf of someone in Parker's space and some in Howards and myself, congratulations, and if you wouldn't, left hand, raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. I, Herbert J. Yardley.
I, Herbert J. Yardley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I.
And that I.
Will bear.
Will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this day.
And in this day.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I will.
And I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
To fulfill.
To fulfill.
A three-year term.
A three-year term.
Said term.
Said term.
To expire.
To expire.
December 31.
December 31.
2023.
2023.
To which.
To which.
I have been.
I have been.
Elected.
Elected.
According.
According.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I will now call the role of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
Next, I ask for nominations for Director of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2021.
I would like to nominate Dawn Fantasia.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Here, I'm done. I need a motion to appoint Commissioner Fantasia as 2021 Director of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Role call. Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
I call forward Mr. Thomas Proll to administer the open office for the Director of County Commissioners.
Repeat after me, please. I, Dawn Fantasia.
I, Dawn Fantasia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Her Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will.
And I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Director of the County Board of Commissioners.
Director of the County Board of Commissioners.
To fulfill.
To fulfill.
A one-year term.
A one-year term.
Said term to.
Said term to.
Expire January 5, 2022.
Expire January 5, 2022.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, I request the nomination for Deputy Director of the County Board of Commissioners for the year 2021.
I'll make a motion to nominate Anthony Fasano for Deputy Commissioner.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Herein none. I request a motion to appoint Commissioner Fasano as 2021 Deputy Director to the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
I invite County Clerk Jeff Parrott to stage within the open office.
I, Anthony Fasano.
I, Anthony Fasano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director.
County Board of Commissioners.
County Board of Commissioners.
To fulfill a one-year term.
To fulfill a one-year term.
Said term to expire.
Said term to expire.
January 5.
January 5.
2022.
2022.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Anthony, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Fantasia is now the meeting chair.
Moving on to number nine, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Number 10, recognition of dignitaries and Commissioner remarks. So first, to speak this evening will be Commissioner Patillo. However, I would like to recognize some of our dignitaries who are here with us this evening. First, we welcome Senator Steve Oraho. We have our County Clerk Jeff Parrott. We have Sussex County Community College President, Dr. John Combs. Frankfurt Township Committee Member, Chris Carney. We have former state assemblyman, Jack Chittorelli. We also have a couple special friends here, but I'll reserve them for my comments. So we'll begin with Director, no longer Director, Patillo. This is going to be hard. With Commissioner Patillo.
Commissioner, Director, all of the changes. Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to thank you for coming out this evening to attend our first constituted Board of County Commissioners reorganization meeting. It is my pleasure to congratulate Herb Yardley on being elected to his second three-year term on the board, Dawn Fantasia, our newly appointed director, and Anthony Fasano, our new deputy director. This board has worked tirelessly this past year to advance the issues that are important to Sussex County, and as the new year unfolds, we will continue to speak out and make our voices heard on behalf of our residents. I would like to begin tonight by recognizing Greg Poff, our county administrator, for his outstanding leadership during this past year. He managed the county's emergency preparedness team, lending and leading to the county's COVID test site at the college, implementing at-home COVID testing and planning for vaccine administration and distribution. He worked closely with our federal legislators to present the case to the Governor's Chief of Staff on behalf of Sussex County and 11 other counties that did not receive direct CRF monies, and he led the tri-county alliance, calling on the governor to allow for regional reopening of businesses in New Jersey's northwest corner. He has accomplished so much during this pandemic. I also want to thank our County Clerk Cherry Lyons and Susie Javoni. They both remained steadfast and steady as things were constantly changing around them. The year 2020 has been an incredibly challenging year, and since March, when the coronavirus was declared a pandemic, everything changed, and COVID took center stage. It has truly been a tumultuous time, but once again, the courage and dedication of our county employees brought us through. They are all amazing, remarkable people that just continue to do extraordinary things, and I want to thank all of them for giving so much of themselves in these difficult times. As layers on to the Department of Health and Human Services, I would be remiss not to personally thank the administrator of this department, Carol Novret, who helped me understand the depth of this organization we call the county. Carol has a tremendous passion for the work that she does and a genuine compassion for the people she serves. The COVID-19 pandemic response has been the highest priority of the Sussex County Division of Health since the reporting of the first positive case. The Office of Public Health Nursing dedicated its entire staff to the pandemic response with significant support from the Office of Environmental Health and the Human Services Divisions. This was an incredible response from the county staff as well and our community-based agency as they united in purpose and they worked together as one entity to ensure our residents were properly cared for throughout the entire pandemic. They harnessed innovation and redesigned many programs to adhere to the guidelines and the safety protocols. The nutrition sites initiated, it was a drive-through grab-and-go meal for seniors. New services were developed that delivered food directly to the homes of residents. Meanwhile, our food pantry volunteers remained true to their mission and showed up every day to work at the pantry. Their selfless commitment kept the weekend backpack program for schoolchildren in place without interruption and supported 25 other food pantries to provide for their community food distribution. The Health and Human Services Divisions have also been working diligently with residents, providing COVID case investigations and contact tracing. For many, COVID-19 was not their only concern. There were often other extenuating circumstances and difficult situations that required social services to be involved. That is why public health nursing worked closely with the Health and Human Services Divisions. Today, they were able to provide a full range of services for the public. The Health Division also provided updated COVID information data trends every single day. They worked with the entire community, including schools, law enforcement, the 24-hour care facilities, and community-based agencies. Early on in the pandemic, the county hired a highly respectable epidemiologist who was able to expand our reports and direct the county's response to COVID. Also during the pandemic, selected members of the staff within the Health and Human Services Divisions were trained as part of a team to contact persons, people who had tested positive for COVID and investigated the COVID case, potential contracts, and social service needs. But what was most telling was the number of people that volunteered because they just wanted to help in any way possible to ensure the continuance of services for the public. Their actions made it clear that their commitment to our residents was paramount. Our transit workers, who transported our most vulnerable population and essential workers, provided nonstop service throughout the entire pandemic as they adapted to the changes and the safety guidelines in order to protect their riders. They navigated through extremely difficult barriers to safely transport our residents to essential jobs, medical appointments, and all other critical necessities. When the governor shut down the state, it caused major disruptions to many programs. However, the overdose fatality review team, which is our newest program, continued to combat the overdose crisis. The team's mission is to investigate the holistic picture that entails a journey of an overdose victim to determine where there are gaps in the system and lapses in treatment. This information allows the team to evaluate what went wrong and recommends improvements within the system. When the shutdown interrupted the review team's ability to meet in person, they found a way to hold their meetings via a secured Zoom link, and wouldn't you know, Sussex County became the first county in the state of New Jersey to hold ORF meetings online. The Health and Human Services Divisions have shown that no matter what obstacles are placed in their way, they can quickly change gears and adapt to the situation in order to provide our residents unprecedented service and care. Our OEM is an integral part of our emergency responders, capable of managing evolving situations. Their response to COVID-19 was immediate and strategic. Sheriff Strada and the Office of Emergency Management worked closely with the Health Department during the pandemic. They worked together to stand up a COVID testing site, which was at the college, and they tested over 370 residents in two months, in a two-month period. They also coordinated and delivered PPE to long-term care facilities, nursing homes, and municipalities. Currently, they are planning the execution details of the vaccination site at the fairgrounds that will open shortly. As we all struggled to comply to the governor's executive orders, businesses in Sussex County were seriously impacted. Our Chamber of Commerce took a strong role in supporting, informing, and advocating for our local businesses. Their state of affairs weekly briefing sessions brought together political leaders at every level to give updates on what was currently happening. The Chamber interacted daily with local businesses, members, and non-members, circulating surveys and producing dozens of sector-specific records. They also assisted business owners when applying for grants or loans. The last organization I want to speak about is Newton Medical Center. Newton Medical Center's commitment to caring for our community never wavered throughout the pandemic. When patients were unable or unwilling to leave their homes to pursue care, the medical center reinvented the methods and locations they used to interact with them. In order to meet patients on their terms and in their homes, they used telehealth visits while its COVID hotline was staffed by experts seven days a week. Still in the middle of this trying year, many bright spots emerged from the darkness. Newton Medical Center sent 335 people home to recover from COVID. The hospital also welcomed 500 healthy babies into the world. Newton Medical Center also celebrated alongside local elected officials and other supporters when the hospital's main driveway was named or renamed Hero's Way. What I presented tonight is just a small tidbit of information, which I hope would help you understand the enormity of the county's emergency response to the COVID crisis and how it tested the strength and the resolve of our entire organization, proving once again that even through overwhelming adversity, the heart of Sussex County shines through. What beautiful success stories to encourage all of us as we look forward to new beginnings and new opportunities in 2021. As this new year unfolds, may you be blessed and may you all be a blessing to others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you, Dawn. I'd like to begin by thanking you, Senator Oraho, for swearing me in tonight. When I first asked Steve to sign my petition, he said he'd be happy to, and I'd be an attribute to the county, and I want to thank you for the encouragement that first election meant a lot. Steve, I've always appreciated your kindness and your guidance, and I'm very grateful to you, Hal and Parker, for representing us, for a job that you and your fellow Assembly members that do for the county. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your support. I'd like to thank Mary Lou Faco, who gave the blessing tonight, and who and why, and was Mary Lou here? Well, Mary Lou was not only a colleague of mine, but she also worked for me when I was in Denville, and we became good friends, and she was also Assistant Reverend at Denville Methodist Church, and we've kept in touch for about 30 years now. So I wanted to thank for making the drive here. She's retired, and she drove two hours up and just to drive two hours back, so I appreciate the fact that she came to that. It was a special treat for me. I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners, as we are no longer called freeholders, chosen freeholders, and for your support over the last three years. It's my hope that the public would realize how hard you all work for Sussex County, and I'm grateful to be part of the group. Jeff Parrott, thank you for clearing. Jeff Parrott, thank you for certifying the election. We all appreciate the hard work you do at the county. Thank you very much. I'd also like to mention a few more people that made my election possible. I'm grateful to all of you that have helped. Thank you, Jerry Scanlon, for your support during the election. A special thank you to Billy Washer for working hard on my campaign and everyone that worked tirelessly to help me get reelected. You all did a remarkable job. I'm proof of it, and I'm here. Of course, I must thank the one person that puts up with me every day. And now, I'm not talking about the county commissioners or the county administrator. I'm talking about my wife, Pat, who's been by my side for 47 years. She's always been my biggest supporter over the years. Thank you, Pat. I love you very much. And I do have to mention the one person that's not here tonight, Baxter, who rides around the county with me. And I can truly say he has never, ever said a bad word about anyone and is always happy to see everybody. So Baxter sends his regards as he's sleeping at home. Lastly, I'd like to thank my family and friends who supported me in many ways and the voters who came out during very difficult times. I must say that 2020 in general was a trying year for all of us. When I prepared to run for reelection, I never expected what would happen to the world. Now, the election would have been, now this election would have been so different than any other, how it would have been, and how COVID-19 would impact our society and change our daily lives. As Sussex County Commissioners, we faced difficulties that we did not foresee nor ever could expect, agreeing that our first concern was to meet the needs and the protection and safety of our residents. There were many individuals who were hospitalized, there were some recovered, and some did not. We were faced with a pandemic that ravaged our nursing homes. How heartbreaking to lose family members, friends, colleagues, neighbors. We suddenly found ourselves in a situation where information was not forthcoming from the state, and there are still unanswered questions. We were asked to provide COVID-19 testing with no funding and no direction as how we get the residents tested. Supplies and test kits were limited as each county and the state struggled to secure its resources. Fortunately, I'm pleased to say that with the help of our state representatives, I'm talking about the senator and the assembly, the Board of County Commissioners, and our administration, we were able to solve the problem together, and it was truly a group effort to provide our residents with COVID-19 testing. Now, there's also home testing test kits available through the county. Presently, there is a plan in place to begin administering vaccines as soon as the vaccine is delivered to the county facilities. You can read more about this on the county website and Health and Human Services site for the vaccination plan. And mitigation and safety of our residents' visitors continue to be the forefront of what the county Freeholders, the county Commissioners, are working toward. Our county administration and dedicated staff continually worked to keep our residents informed. We have tried to improve the availability of services through these difficult times, especially for individuals that may require specialized or social services, including veterans, seniors, and the disabled. While we continue to deal with the current pandemic, I'm pleased to say that we've continued to provide many services and maintain an infrastructure of our county. The county continues to activate, advance a capital transportation improvement program, which includes in excess of $20 million grants and over $10 million of Sussex County capital funds for transportation projects such as resurfacing roads, replacement of rail systems, guide rail systems, replacement traffic signs, rehabilitation of bills. We received additional funding for our county bus program, which expanded transportation at the county level for anyone that uses this service. Now and always, it is of the utmost importance that people have a reliable source of transportation to be able to get to places like doctor's appointments, pharmacies for medication, grocery store, wherever else they may need to go around the county. Senior Services offers phone or virtual appointments to assist connecting seniors over 60 and their caregivers to needed services, such as Medicare assistance, prescription assistance, application completion, completions, long-term care support. There's also resources for grab-and-go meals or mail delivery. I'm proud to say that our county offices, departments, divisions have adapted to providing services virtually as necessary and will continue to do so to serve the Sussex County residents. I want to close by saying I look forward to the time when we all meet in person, whether at a meeting or simply to say, hey, how you doing and what's going on? Baxter also sends his sentiment and looks forward to meeting again with the seniors and other groups throughout the county. Until then, it's important that we all do our part to stay safe. I too am waiting for the vaccine, which I hope will bring back a sense of normalcy. I appreciate the goodwill the people of Sussex County have sent to me, and thank all of you once again for your support, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for joining us here tonight in this beautiful facility. I want to thank Sussex County Community College for allowing us to have this meeting here so that we can do so safely during this unique and historic time. It's an honor to be appointed Deputy Director of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. I'm very appreciative of your trust and support in me, and it has been a pleasure to work with each of you over the last year. I want to thank now former Commissioner Hertzberg for his time and commitment to Sussex County, as he will be surely missed on this board. However, I know he will be an advocate and an asset for Sparta Township and its residents. I want to congratulate Commissioner Yardley on a well-deserved reelection, as I know he will continue to provide important perspective and guidance on the challenges that lie ahead. I want to express my sincere gratitude to Commissioner Patilla for the incredible amount of work she has done for Sussex County and the leadership she has provided as director during one of our most challenging years. And of course, I want to congratulate our new director of this board, Commissioner Fantasia, who is extremely deserving of this position and I know will lead with integrity, honesty, and a true passion for the advancement of this county. A year ago today, none of us knew the challenges that awaited our world, our nation, our state, and this county. At this time last year, I was just getting started on trying not to get lost in the county building and getting to know our staff. I'm still working on both of those items, but when the world changed and Sussex County was confronted with a global pandemic, I got to know a lot of our staff much quicker than I think we both had originally thought. And a year later, I can come back to this room and confidently report that Sussex County has the most committed of staff who is committed to you. From our administration, our Health and Human Services, our Public Health Nursing, our Office of Emergency Management, our Transit Office, our Central and Shared Services Department, our Finance and Library Services, our Department of Engineering and Planning, our Technology Staff, our Public Work Staff, our Law Enforcement Professionals, our Clerk, our Surrogate, our Divisions of Social Services, Senior Services, Community and Youth Services, the list goes on and on and on. But the fact is that our staff here in Sussex County come to work every day focused on making Sussex County the best and safest county possible for our residents, and I am incredibly appreciative of it. Not only have I seen it for myself, but throughout the year, I've received countless stories about how a staff member has solved an issue, addressed a concern, or advanced a goal in going above and beyond. It has been inspiring as our staff reflects what makes Sussex County so great, and that's the people. So thank you to our staff for truly going above and beyond in a year where we needed it most. Just one small example of this is our Department of County Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Parrott, for swearing me in earlier. This year, the county clerk and his office were confronted with the challenge of an all-vote-by-mail election for the first time, which meant a whole host of new and unique challenges never faced before, including making sure everyone received a ballot, answering everybody's new questions, and to ensure every vote was received and then counted. That was not your typical challenge, but you wouldn't know when speaking with the clerk and his team, who developed a comprehensive plan and executed it incredibly well during difficult circumstances, resulting in a safe, successful, and certified election. I should also mention that even with the difficult year, our clerk's office continues to come in under budget and achieves strong organizational and fiscal success. I still remain impressed with how well that team responded to that challenge and to make sure our residents were informed every step of the way. So, Mr. Parrott, thank you for all the work you do for Sussex County, and please relay the same to your staff. Throughout the year, I've referred to COVID-19 as a fight, Sussex County's collective fight against a virus that absolutely must be defeated so that we can all get back to normal. Sussex County's response to COVID-19 has evolved greatly throughout the year and will continue to do so. However, we have four objectives that guide us with every decision that we make here. That's to save lives, ensure safety, continue vigilance in prevention, and maintain a commitment toward the reopening of businesses. It is coupled with an all-in spirit of collaboration and partnership to meet those needs and to meet the needs of our residents. Every day, Sussex County reports on the activity of this virus, and since March, Sussex County's COVID-19 hotline has served as an important tool for residents who have questions about the virus. The hotline is open Monday through Friday from 9 to 4 for residents to speak with our Division of Health, whether it be a Division of Health staff member or a Sussex County Medical Reserve Corps volunteer. You can reach that hotline at 973-579-9488. We are continuing to develop a comprehensive testing strategy, which will include at-home testing options, which we have already seen good progress with here, fixed site, and walk-up testing options. The county is finalizing an agreement with Zofal Health Clinic for additional testing sites in Frankfurt, Newton, and Sparta. At-home testing is already available in Sussex County, and you can go right on the county website to request one and to learn more. And that is thanks to an important collaboration between Sussex County and LabCorp, which has enabled us to have a good foundation when it comes to at-home testing. We also have finalized an agreement with Vault Medical Services to provide additional at-home testing capabilities. Given our geography, at-home testing is one really, really important tool for us, and another is getting this information out. So I do want to mention here tonight that on our COVID-19 webpage, which is simply sussex nj.us/covid19, there is a link titled "Testing Site Map," which directs you to put in your location and to see what testing sites are around you, which does update frequently. Sussex County has also formed an important countywide testing task force consisting of members representing our county government, our county links agency, the Health Department, Newton Medical Center, the Zofal Health Center, our Office of Emergency Management, the State Department of Health, community-based organizations, and faith-based organizations, which is crucial in helping us determine next steps when it comes to testing. All of this is thanks in part to the Board of Commissioners, negotiating with the governor's office over the summer for $1.8 million in very important federal cares funding after originally being excluded from that aid. And I too would like to thank our LD24 representatives for their assistance in that. Although there is plenty to be said about the resources not received from the state for Sussex County to combat this virus appropriately, that funding has gone a long way in ensuring Sussex County has an adequate response to COVID-19 without its expenses falling on the back of our county budget. But for as concerning as COVID-19 is to our physical well-being, I believe it is just as serious of a threat to our economic one. In May, the Sussex County Board of Commissioners entered a tri-county partnership with 101 Warren Counties in urging the governor to consider a regional plan to reopen local businesses. Although some things have changed since then, the three counties continue to work together in advocating for the needs of our business community, including about a month ago, when all three counties adopted a non-interference-with-local-business policy, recognizing every business as essential. Over the course of the year, the Sussex County Board of Commissioners also built a tremendous collaboration with the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership and the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, who since the beginning of this pandemic has been hosting weekly county State of Affairs briefings with government and local businesses, which have been really helpful in getting information out and also for us, hearing from our hard-hit business community. Thanks to this collaboration, we were able to work together in developing an interactive business map right on our county website, which connects our residents to local businesses to see their services, their hours, and their specials. Thanks to the feedback received from our business community throughout the year, the Sussex County Board of Chosen Commissioners in June adopted a blanket no-cost approval for all licensed food and beverage establishments to permit outdoor dining. I think we have all seen good signs over the last few weeks of what is coming, and that's a vaccine. We've seen the first of the vaccine here in New Jersey and anticipate the first of those doses going to hospitals and long-term care facilities. Sussex County is working with the New Jersey Department of Health in developing a COVID-19 vaccination program, and just a few weeks ago, Sussex County received its approval of its CDC COVID-19 Vaccination Program Provider Agreement. And that is important because it identifies that Sussex County's vaccination program will be set up as a public health clinic, very similar to our flu clinic, and will be known as a point of dispensing site. Our objectives with this plan is to provide fair access to all who live, work, or are educated in Sussex County, and assuming its effectiveness and availability, achieving community protection and sustainable trust. We're still in the very early stages of this, but this is a big collaborative effort between many levels of federal, state, and local government, and it's important to note that Sussex County is a conduit of the state's vaccination plan. But it is also a big step toward defeating this virus, something we all have been working really hard to get to, and that's to get back to normal. We're in the process of preparing for that, and more information and updates will be posted on the county's website as it becomes available. As we look forward, we have met challenges never faced before in 2020, and it has prepared us for the 2021 that awaits us. A new, hopeful world awaits us on the other side of this virus. I'm confident in our county leadership. I'm confident in our county that we will be able to put COVID-19 behind us, learn from it, and grow stronger because of it. I'm excited for that day, and I know we are all working so hard to get there, and I have no doubt that we will, and we will soon. In the meantime, we'll keep you posted every step of the way. Thank you for your time and for your support, and may God bless Sussex County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, as I begin, I would first like to offer thanks to some special people. First, Tom Pearl. Thank you, Tom, for being here tonight. Tom is a native of Franklin, but he's a colleague and a friend. I had the pleasure of working with him when he was our Franklin Borough Attorney, and I appreciate you. Thank you for always being there for me. Thank you to my children, Maria, Aiden, and Lila, who are all home from school, work, whatnot, and were able to be here tonight with me. My parents could not be here due to health reasons, but I'm grateful that my children were here. Thank you to District 24 Legislative Team, Senator Ohrhough, and Assemblymen Wirths in Space, who never skip a beat in demanding equity and resources for our district. I would like to thank Sheriff Strata, who heads the Office of Emergency Management, which ensures an immediate response to protect the public; to County Clerk Jeff Parrott, who masterfully navigated the evolving mandates for this election; to County Surrogate Gary Chisano, who maintained consistent services in the midst of the health crisis. I'd like to appreciate and recognize the hard work put forth by our department heads and our county employees. They are the heart and soul, they're adaptable, they're hardworking, they're kind, and they always put the residents first. God bless you for all you do. I'd like to thank Greg Poff, our Administrator, who is accessible to the Board 24/7 and works tirelessly to meet goals and objectives set forth by the Board; our CFO, Elka Yetter, who keeps us appraised and up to the minute on any and all opportunities to increase savings and to maintain fiscal responsibility; and Carol Novret, the Administrator of the Department of Health and Human Services. Carol is my Gal Friday, she's my go-to, she's my rock during the health crisis and beyond. I'd like to thank Terri and Suzie for their consistent communication; our attorney, Kevin Kelly- Kelly for his legal guidance and support. There are also a couple individuals here who just happen to be wonderful people. We have Billy Washer, thank you, Billy, for coming tonight; and we have Alex Majuski, Jerry Scanlon, thank you always for your support; we have Bill Hayden, thank you for being here; and we have Frank Pallada. Frank was a candidate for Congress, and I have to say that not holding an office supported our county and advocated for this district more than individuals who were representatives of this district. So we will always be grateful to you and thank you. So I must say it's nice for us to be together and where I can see faces or eyes, at least. To clarify tonight's format and how we ended here, our Board had switched to audio public meetings in March, and we actually scheduled our first in-person meeting in late September. The very following day, our Board received guidance from the state, as our regular meeting room has a maximum capacity of nine people. Under current guidelines, that limits our ability to hold a meeting that accommodates the public. Thank you so much to the college, who has graciously granted us use of this space this evening. We have requested future use, however, this is not expected nor guaranteed, as when classes are in session, the college will be utilizing this space themselves. So therefore, our Plan B is to utilize a Zoom format moving forward, at least in the near future, if in-person meetings are not logistically possible. Reflecting back to a year ago, the tone of this meeting was vastly different. Tonight is not myopic, it's not through rose-colored glasses, there are no hearty pats on the back for the four of us that are sitting up here, no politician can use this crisis for self-congratulation, and all elected officials cannot stop pushing forward to do better and to be better. As I complete year two of my term, it's paramount to stay true to the issues the Board set forth and address the goals that we set out to accomplish. So when we look at Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, our priorities are crystallized, and as we establish our goals tonight, we again agree on a guiding principle, differentiating needs versus wants in order to promote affordability while providing comprehensive services to the county residents. And this core principle applies in the following ways. One, there is a need to provide comprehensive health and human services. Beginning in March, county officials received a steady stream of reports from employees, families, family members, residents of a long-term care facility, and we saw our most vulnerable population in our nursing homes under siege as the state ordered COVID-19 positive patients to be accepted into our long-term care facilities and prohibited testing as a condition of patient intake, resulting in the total deaths of 116 county residents and staff members. Sussex County followed all New Jersey Department of Health procedures and guidelines while alerting state and federal officials about critical needs within this facility that required urgent and immediate action. And I commend Sheriff Strata and the Office of Emergency Management, Andover's elected officials in the Andover Police Department, and local and county agencies who acted immediately, which in turn prompted overdue action on the part of the state. And this is where I again thank Senator O'Roh, who was an integral part of getting movement on the part of the state for that response for our people. Our Board requested deployment of the National Guard and a request for immediate funding to address health infrastructure, including a plea to the state to send us discretionary dollars granted to the state by the federal government. As there was a lack of funding provided to the county, resulting in the county receiving zero federal dollars in direct cares funding to pay for adequate testing, personnel, and resources to battle the coronavirus until the month of August. And as funds slowly trickled to this corner of the state, our county emergency preparedness team continues to plan and deliver services as our needs evolve, including testing and vaccination. Our next meeting will include further specifics from the state regarding vaccination timelines, as this is solely spearheaded by the New Jersey Department of Health, with our county acting as the conduit of services. Number two, there is the need for clear, concise communication between the county, the municipalities we serve, and with the public. Our county was praised in the media as one of the state's most cooperative counties, providing comprehensive data to the public through the pandemic. In direct response to public need for comprehensive information, we retained an epidemiologist who provides us with weekly reports and an analysis of trends, not only to inform the public, but also to guide the county in our pandemic response. Currently, the county utilizes public notices, newspaper, print, digital media, including our webpage and social media to communicate with the public. Again, this will be increased, with more frequent updates by a dedicated individual who will spearhead communications from this county to ensure timely messages are going out to the public. This year, the Board also utilized town liaison assignments, which proved very difficult due to physical restrictions, so as such, a bi-monthly mayor's call was held in order to help each and every municipality stay up to date on any and all developments from the county. Number three, there is a financial need to protect the financial interests of our residents. When we engage in elective projects that exceed standard appropriations or involve third-party bonding, that decision to invest in such expenditures now goes to the voters due to the direct action of this Commissioner Board. The Board continues to differentiate needs versus wants and locate any and all savings to reduce burden on our taxpayers. Working with our departments, we will continue to seek ways to consolidate services, to trim budgets, while delivering solid, uninterrupted services to the county. And with our businesses losing money daily, an overwhelmed unemployment system, and small business relief promised yet not delivered, our goal to support small businesses and advocate for compensation, and the promise to protect your investment in offering goods and services in our communities is a critical priority as our year unfolds. Number four, there is a need for ethical and open practice in everything this Board does. The establishment of a county ethics board has been discussed at length, and as the pandemic took a front seat, this issue will be addressed this year, and I fully expect to have formal action taken. And number five, there is a need to support our District 24 legislators as they tirelessly push at the state level for our needs in this often-forgotten corner of northwestern New Jersey. There may be state issues that are outside the direct control of this Board, but it is our duty to be mindful of any and all legislation that creates inequity and increases the cost of living and infringes on the rights of those in the county. And often, it's those decisions made in Trenton that deal us our largest financial blow. Make no mistake, this Board is keenly aware that your rights are essential. And I would be remiss to not thank Joshua Hertzberg. Calm and steady, we committed ourselves to improving culture and climate, ensuring fair and competitive compensation while remaining in the parameters of the county budget. Joshua also spearheaded our adopted county debt reduction plan, transforming an unrealistic 30-year plan to an actionable 10-year plan. I am so proud of his work, his values, his intelligence, and his fire leaves big shoes to fill on this Board, and I am confident the Republican County Committee will select a strong and principled replacement to finish his unexpired term. I leave you with this promise: This Commissioner Board stands lockstep in its ideals and commitment to serve in leadership. I am so thankful to work alongside Sylvia, and Herb, and Anthony. What you will not hear from this Board is "I's" and "me's." You will hear a whole lot of "we's" and "us.' As such, we will never stand idly by while a flaccid state response is a direct contributing factor to harm our residents. This Board will continue to fight and do what is good and right within our powers to demand accountability from the state and the New Jersey Department of Health and to protect the residents of Sussex County. Each and every one of you, each and every one of us, are essential. I thank you for being with us tonight, and God bless you. So moving on, we are on number 11, Proclamations. There are none this evening. And next, we have Public Session from the Floor. This public session is for questions or comments pertaining to items on our agenda only. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. If you would like to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and your municipality. There will be a second public session, open to any and all comments at the end of the meeting. I need a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Public session is now open. Seeing no one approach, I would like a motion to close the floor to public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Pass. Number 13, Approval of Consent Agenda.
I'll make the motion.
The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is and will further the public interest. If any Commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. It is Consent Agenda Items A through O. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Resolutions A to O.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Chisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 14, Appointments. Appointments A through C. Can I have a motion to adopt Appointments A through C?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Chisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 15, Resolutions. There are none. Number 16, Awards of Contract, Change Orders, Bid, None. And that brings us to number 17, Public Session from the Floor. Please note, everyone is asked to keep their comments to three minutes or less. You can comment on anything, any topic, regardless of inclusion on the agenda. Just please come to the podium, state your name and your municipality. I need a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The floor is now open. Seeing no one coming forward, I'd like a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 18, Reminders. This is a reminder to please visit the county website for all meeting dates and times and future guidance as to our location and format of our upcoming meetings. This Board meets twice a month. That brings us to our adjournment. I would just like to again say thank you. Thank you for coming out and supporting us this evening. It means the world to us. Again, even if I just saw this much of you, that's more than I've seen of you in months, so it's a pleasure. And thank you, please stay safe, God bless, and we're always available. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.